This is the Board of Selectmen meeting, a regular meeting Wednesday, May 17th, 2017. So I'd like to begin with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're all standing, I would like to mention the passing of Doreen Lounsbury. Doreen worked at the Superintendent of Schools office at Dayton Rehoboth Regional for a number of years. She and I worked together in that office, and I would often see her at Lincoln Village. And she also periodically would be at some of the volunteer recognition luncheons that the Council on Aging held. So I would ask for a moment of silence in the memory of Doreen Lounsbury. Thank you, and we extend our sympathy to her family.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, we're going to start with public input, since I see no one from the public other than the people that I know are going to want to talk about tonight, so I guess we'll move on. So I want to do an informational presentation by Ron Marino, our Harbor Master, and the purpose of this is to just kind of give people an overview of some of the rules on the river and also what they can expect as the summer approaches, so.
Thank you very much. As 2017 season begins.
I'd like to introduce your.
Next to me is Assistant Harbor Master Mark Duffy and mooring officer, as well as Assistant Harbor Master Alex Simbolisti. We put this together to be relatively expedient. I would like each one of them to have an opportunity to say a little bit. So who we are as Harbor Masters, we're an appointed position under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 102. We enforce the laws of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 98. The Harbor Master and the assistants sit on the boards of the Disaster Preparedness Committee for the town. We represent the town in the Taunton Stewardship Council. We are members of the town's Emergency Response Team. We're members of the Cape and the Islands Harbor Master Association and participate in on- and off-the-water activities with the Massachusetts Environmental Police, the United States Coast Guard, the Maritime Security Council, state and local law enforcement agencies. We also interact with first responder agencies as well as Homeland Security. I've introduced my two assistants, the two assistants right now, recently, and recently Mark was appointed to the newly created position of mooring officer. So any questions or requests for mooring in the town of Dayton will go directly to Mark Duffy at this point. The Harbor Masters and the Assistant Harbor Masters, we each hold one or more of the following credentials: compliance with Massachusetts Harbor Master Training Council, Coast Guard Merchant Mariner Certificate, which is a captain's license, Transportation Worker's Identification Card, which is also known as a TWIC card, First Aid and CPR, Power Squadron and Coast Guard Auxiliary Training, National Association of State Boating Law Administrators, which is NASBLA, sorry for all the acronyms, but they exist. We've taken basic seamanship courses, enhanced vessel operators classes, boating search and rescue courses, just to name a few. We are also, I am personally also, an Advanced Open Water Diver certified through the Professional Association of Divers. What we do, on the water, we're an on-the-water safety team. We basically ensure that safe boating practices are adhered to when we're out on the water. We're first responders on the water. We render assistance when and where needed to anyone and everyone that needs it. We're on-the-water law enforcement. We stop unsafe boating and we look for boaters violating state and local laws. That's not our primary function, but that is one of our functions. Right now, we're currently working on a non-emergency towing policy that we'll submit to the Selectmen for review and approval, because in the past we haven't towed anybody. We basically weren't well situated to do that. We now have a boat that, in the event of a non-emergency and a salver hasn't been contacted, we would like to offer that. What should the public do coming up for the 2017 boating season? One, you should take a safe boating course, whether it's a NASBLA course, Coast Guard Auxiliary, Power Squadron, any one of those.
How would they know, who would they contact to find the windows out?
Any, I would go online. All the courses have already started, but they generally run, they hop scots throughout the summer, and they're all over southeastern Massachusetts. So go online, look for safe boating courses in Massachusetts, and you're going to get hits for all three of those groups.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You said first respond. Do you mean if someone is on the water in Dayton and they have, you know, a medical emergency, what happens? Do you guys first respond to that as well?
We do, whether that's to get there to assist the needs of the person or to bring EMS, EMT, safety personnel out to them, yeah, because we're the only way for them to get there.
Are you, do any of you EMT certified?
No, no, nope. Another thing you can do is pick up a copy of the state boating regulations, which is this little booklet right here, which there's, we just put copies out in the front lobby. It's a summary of many of the state boating laws and safety laws. Next thing is I always wear a PFD, a Personal Flotation Device, and I would suggest you, if you're going to get one, which you should, get one that's comfortable for what you're doing, and you will wear. You may not have worn one before growing up, but things are different now, so. And the last thing before I hand it off to Mark is be aware that as the captain, you are solely responsible for the safety of your crew, your boat, and the effects of your boating actions on private property, so keep that in mind.
The PFD issue, I've been, I've had a lot of fishing up in Canada. In Canada, everybody wears a PFD. We come down here, a few people do it. Boy, it's something that everybody should be wearing, absolutely.
And you know, 50% of the time, it's people say, "Well, it's uncomfortable." Well, there are so many styles. Buy one that fits your style of boating, and you will wear it all the time.
Wear an helmet if you bike around, a full bag around.
At this time, I'd like to hand it off to Mark Duffy, our mooring officer.
Good evening and thank you. As the mooring officer, I'm responsible for tendering the applications. We currently have 80 moorings along our waterfront area. We have nine private aids within the Dayton Harbor. Taunton Yacht Club and Shawamette, they own and maintain the majority of those, 80, and I have recordings of all of those in their process through me. For individual moorings, we have a $50 mooring fee, which again comes, the application is on the town website, it's underneath the Harbor Masters Department op. That's filled out, that's submitted to me. I'm also responsible for the 10A floating docks, so anybody that wants to put a dock up there, their application comes through me. We have an understanding with the building department there to review it for constructability, anything that's attached by line or directly to the shore. I'm also a representative on the Taunton River Stewardship Council. I attend the meetings there and represent Dayton in that regard. We've done a lot of real good things recently with some studies that are going on in the river to enhance the ecological impact, various studies and stuff like that that's going on. That's my function.
Who can get a mooring on Dayton water?
Any town resident can get a mooring.
Town resident?
Yes. And the application is on the Dayton town website underneath the Harbor Master Department.
Okay, that's great.
And out of town as well?
And out of town as well.
So out of town, you can get one, okay.
What does it cost for a mooring?
It's $50 for a town resident, and I'm going to defer to.
It's, we just have a flat $50 fee. It's something that was recently implemented, so we don't have a fee structure, we just have one flat rate.
It's 50 bucks for the year?
For the year, yeah.
That mooring would be placed at the?
Yes, down at the boat ramp. That's where the majority of the free space is, and that's where the parking is as well.
Now, you said that you have 80 mooring spots?
All told, including Shawamette and the Taunton Yacht Club, there are 80 mooring spots. The mooring spots that are out in front of Shaw's Boatyard are technically in Berkeley, so we're not responsible for the maintenance of those.
So why do the 80, how many usually get filled?
Right now, there's probably about 30. 30 last year.
When you're driving down Pleasant Street and you see boats moored here and there, how do you determine where a boat gets moored? Is it, if I lived on Pleasant Street, would I want a spot right out there near my house? Or how do you do that?
If you're a resident on Pleasant Street, you're given preference to a spot out in front of your house, provided it doesn't get within close proximity to the channel. You have to leave a certain amount of space in the channel for navigation both to and from. To the general public looking to put a mooring out, that's typically because of the parking scenario, we put them down by the boat ramp, because there's plenty of parking down there.
In that case, they're not parking in front of your house to take, walking on private property to go with your boat? That's why that area would be designated to the boat ramp area.
Is there a fee, if I just, you know, had a boat and a trailer and I want to go out for the day, I just, I can go down to boat ramp, there's no fee for me to put that boat in or just, okay?
There would be a buck and rent, the tip that was, buck and rent is charged in those?
Okay, but there isn't a fee at this point?
No.
Okay.
It's a pretty poor boat ramp, so it would be difficult to chat somewhere to use that.
How deep is that anyway?
Depends on the tide.
Yeah, the tide is, I mean, I put a 21 footer in there at mid-tide, and I fired my engine up and I sucked up half the bottom of the Taunton River, so it really does depend on the tide. High tide, you can get away with a 21 footer. You can put canoes all over the river. I mean, there's seven different launching spots along this river for canoes and kayaks and stuff like that, but to launch a boat, Woody's right.
Yeah, that might be something we might want to put on the website if we can, maybe just a simple map of the river and identify where those spots are for people, you know, just an informational, teamwork, breadth and.
Is Sweet Snow one of the places?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I believe it's on the fence. Up near the house now, so I think you have to walk from the parking area at the house all the way to the river before you still have to drive it, the long walk.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, the boat, the river, right, for sure.
That's my portion of this presentation, I'll get back to Ron.
Two more minutes, and we'd love to have Alex say a few words.
Thank you for having me. So in November of 2016, as you know, the town of Dayton has moved ahead and has purchased a 2006 21-foot Boston Whaler Justice from the town of Chatham. This boat has a Yamaha 250 four-stroke engine as well as a load right trailer. The boat went into service as far as the town as the new Harbor Master boat in early December of last year, so it was in for a few weeks, and then obviously with winter impending, it was taken out and is currently back in the water. The boat's equipped with emergency lighting, radar, GPS, chart plotter, sonar, radar communications, VHF and police dispatch radio, a tow bar, sorry, and a dive door, which makes it very convenient as far as doing a rescue or putting in and out of, getting debris off the water or putting in and out no-wake buoys for the town. A dive door comes, basically the door comes right off the side of the boat, so you have a good three-foot section where you, it's open, so it's a very, very safe way to get somebody in and off instead of, you know. So that is a big upgrade from our last boat that was sold, now since it's been sold, to the Berkeley Fire Department, so. As far as some more information, if you are interested in kind of getting more knowledge about the town Harbor Master group here, online on the website, we have all of our harbor plans, mooring applications, our 10A floating docks, also all of our contact information's on there, so our cell phones, our emails, we all have emails, cell phones are listed. And then we are on the water, for the general public to know, we are always monitoring Channel 16 on the VHF radio, it's an emergency radio system for boats when you are underway on the water, so if anybody's ever in need of assistance, that would be the channel to go on.
So, question, where, describe the no-wake zone, because that's always an issue, you know, where, where can you go within a wake zone, I guess?
I'm going to have Ron kind of finish up on that. There's a couple of different Massachusetts general laws that we are currently enforcing, and Ron would be the gentleman for that.
Effectively, all of it's no-wake zone under Massachusetts General Law.
Over here?
Over here. Massachusetts, in an admissible channel or narrow fairway, all vessels must operate at what's called headway speed, which is the slowest possible speed that you can operate your boat and still maintain steerage. That's Massachusetts law, it's been there forever. We have no wake buoys as reminders. Excuse me? There are many who don't know the laws and will disagree with the enforcement of it. However, the laws have existed long before many boaters have been out there, and my message to them is, when they say, "I've been doing this forever," I say, "No, you've just been getting away with it." So the no-wake zone is from Shaw's Boatyard all the way to the Shawhamet Yacht Club.
Scan 14 to 23.
I believe it says on his town website there, it's from Peters Quite to Hot Street.
That is correct, that is the original town bylaw, that's typically a section.
And that's what it says in the bylaw.
That's okay, but that doesn't mean it excludes other areas. That's just one section that I don't.
My problem is, Mr. Marino, I've been on the water a long time, and since you took over, I have to say, and I'm going to try to say this in the nicest way possible, I want to come across as an ass, but you've been unreasonable on the water, very unreasonable. People are out there to have fun, and I'm sure you want to protect that section of the river, and I'm all for that, but once people go by Hot Street and they want to jump on it, let them jump on it. People buy these water cars.
No, no. So the laws state that you shall operate at headway speed. You just said you've been doing it all your life, and I just said you've just been getting away with it. If you, if you don't like the laws that we have in Dayton Harbor, you're free to boat somewhere else.
Oh, thank you very much. Now, I've seen you and Alex both speed up and down the river.
Let's not get into our, our.
No, Jack, it's.
Just a minute, Woody. We want you to define what the, what the law is.
What is it, how he reads this law?
Okay, but let's, let's.
Please be realistic. Well, Jack, you pulled over 117 boats last year. I'm quite sure that Patrone Nichols didn't even pull over 117 cars.
My point is, we're not going to resolve.
It's out of control.
We're not going to resolve that issue here tonight. That's an issue?
It is out of control.
Woody, you brought the issue up. We'll look at the issue, but we're not going to resolve it here tonight. That's not the purpose of this meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to, is an informational, so at least people know what the rules are, and then if we need to address the rules, we'll do that in a separate forum.
People have a disagreement with the rule, it's actually the law. They are free to go to the State House and contest the law. It's not up to them.
Alex, I don't have a problem with you or the other gentleman, but this man is out of control.
I have a question.
Woody, let's get back to the topic here.
So when I go down Pleasant Street, sometimes, and I'm not sure I've seen them this year, sometimes there's a marker out there that says five, and I've seen no-wake zones. Is the five a speed limit?
The five was an arbitrary number that someone put out there.
Okay.
But there's no, in Massachusetts law, defined speed limit number for the minimum.
Okay.
It's, headway speed is how it's defined under 323 CMR 2.088.
Does that include that apply to all rivers?
All inland waters in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Inland waters meaning everything shoreline of the line of demarcation which separates inland from near coastal.
So if I have a small boat, a 16 footer, and you have your boat, a boat the size of the town boat, let's say, your private boat, am I going to go faster or slower to be able to main that, maintain that headway speed? Because you got a bigger boat with a stronger engine, and I got my little 16 footer with a, you know, rinky-dink.
It depends on the tide.
I'm not sure.
It could depend on the tide, right?
All boats can travel at headway speed. If the boat can't travel at headway speed, then it shouldn't be off the dock.
But I didn't know if the size of the boat affected.
No, you can be in a small skiff at headway speed and zipping right along. You could be in a 45 footer at headway speed and still with 25,000 pounds of mass, moving right along.
Oh, okay.
You know, if you're going against the tide, obviously the tide's going to hold you a little bit, but again, now you might be losing headway speed, so you might bring it up a little bit.
People, I see people in sailboats, like, a lot of sailboats on the river.
Yeah.
When they're going through the, the no-wake zone, are they, are they under sail or are they, do they have a little motor going? I mean.
If they have the motor going, while they have their sail up, they are considered a power boat, a motorboat. If they are under sail with no mechanical means of propulsion, they are a sailboat.
Okay.
And there's a hierarchy of who has the right-of-way, but in our area, they would fall under having the right-of-way as a sailboat unless it was a vessel not under command, a vessel restricted in its ability to maneuver, or a vessel constrained by its draft, but we don't generally get those types of vessels up here unless those are commercial work vessels, like a barge with a crane on it might be a vessel constrained by its draft.
Oh, like for the bridge, those big cranes they ride?
Yeah, no, so if a sailboat is coming across the channel, that vessel constrained by its draft or restricted in its ability to maneuver would have headway, would have right-of-way over the sailboat. But otherwise, for just recreational boaters, the sailboat's going to prevail.
Just one other question. When they were moving those barges up and down the river and all that, did they notify you ahead of time?
In the beginning, they did.
Okay.
They did. I asked them if they were okay with transiting to the bridge, they said they were, because I offered to go with them, and they said, "No, we're good." I said, "Okay."
Okay.
All right.
I have a couple more questions.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good.
Jack, I would like to know if the no-wake buoys are registered with the Coast Guard? Yes, they are. All of them? Yes, they are. I, she, she located them and I reported to the US Coast Guard.
Right. And I also want to know if there's a maintenance plan for this new boat. I mean, the last boat, you just ran it into the ground, and I would like to know that we're going to maintain this boat and.
Would I, let me ask a question. Let me ask a question. Is there a maintenance program?
We actually contracted with a company here in town that does marine outboards, who's Yamaha certified, who does.
What's their name, sir?
Can I give their names at this meeting?
Of course you can.
I don't think, no, I don't think we need to give them.
It's public record, but.
He says he has a maintenance plan, I'm going to take him at his word he has a maintenance plan, so if.
I noticed it didn't increase his budget this year.
Okay, this is not the purpose of this presentation tonight. If you want to talk to me personally about it with the issues you have, then we'll go with that, but I don't think that's the purpose of this.
Jack, this has been going on for years.
This is not the purpose of this meeting, Woody, and if you can't adhere to that, I'm going to have to ask you to leave, you know.
Thank you, Jack.
I appreciate your concern.
What happened about your agenda is my agenda, but that's just a campaign.
It's not an appropriate, this is not appropriate form for the questions you're asking. You can talk to me personally, and I will look into the things you're concerned about, but I don't want to waste the public's time at this meeting today. That's not why we asked him to come here. We asked him to give an informational, so people can understand the rules of the river and what they can expect, and I'll talk to you individually, I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you, Jack.
I have one other question. When you, when the boat goes out on the river, the town boat, are there always two people on it?
No.
No?
No.
Do you do regular patrols, like, you know, the summertime when it's busy? In the evening, you might have boats coming and going, and people, people I assume stay on their boat sometimes, are there?
We generally try to get Friday night, if it's a busy night or a longer weekend, we'll try to be there for Friday night, four to seven, eight, when the most traffic's going to be there, Saturday morning, mid-Saturday afternoon, because you do get a lull from about 10 o'clock till maybe 2 o'clock. Everybody's already gone out, and people down river may find it rough, and they start venturing upriver, so from 2, 3, 4 o'clock, you'll get a little more, and then usually around 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, you'll get another wave, and then Sunday, same, same scenario.
Do some people stay on their boats, because some of the boats look pretty good sized?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, many people do.
Yeah, I have several people that do.
Yeah, yacht clubs have rendezvous, where they have other yacht clubs visit, and they might raft up together, there might be six, seven boats.
Or a rally or something, oh, okay.
Yeah, they do that a lot.
You can tell I'm not a boater.
Thanks very much.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, have a good night.
Yeah, you too, thank you.
Any, I see some more public input, come in. Anybody have other public input before we move on to our other agenda items? The next item on the agenda is, enroll businesses, a letter of support or non-opposition to the proposed medical marijuana facility. Now, the Green Harbor Medical Marijuana Dispensary came into our, to our meeting several weeks ago and made a presentation to us. They then, just last week, I think, made a presentation to the planning board. The planning board has, has given us a letter that they are, let me read it to you. Planning board has had a presentation on May 3rd, 2017, by Green Harbor Dispensary. The planning board is a supporter and recommends the town move forward with the procedures to allow the cultivation facility and the dispensary to be located here in our town. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call the planning board office. So we have that. The Industrial Commercial Committee also has met, they're the ones that kind of initiated this, this process to have them come in, and they also have given us something that says that obviously they're, they want us to move forward with it. Now, I'm not sure, this will, I'll open this up to discussion amongst any of us. I'm not sure we're in a position to say at this point that we support the project, because I don't think we yet know enough about it, but I am, but I would, I would suggest that we're in a position to give them a letter of non-opposition at this point. And the reason for that is, Green Harbor Company needs that letter to go forward to the state to put in their application, and then they can start the process. During the course of, of the permitting process, there will be public hearings about it. The planning board will have a public hearing. I don't know about zoning, but there will be public hearings where, there'll be more information, so.
Was there an informational meeting after you met with the board the first time? There was a date tossed around, I remember that.
There was a planning board meeting on the 3rd, and then I believe there is or was an informational meeting on the 23rd.
Right. Which we'd rather not bring Green Harbor back in again so soon, and as we go along and approve the procedure, make sure it's well announced as we directed today with my meeting with you, and so that anybody that needs to speak out can come out.
And I think, I think if we got an informational meeting, I think we need to spend a good amount of effort to really publicize it so people know if people come down there and really, you know, hear about it and hear their voices heard, so.
And I do want to say that we can, the Development and Industrial Commission has been involved with this process since they contacted me, best care of the Development and Industrial Committee. Thank you.
Comments or thoughts on it?
I don't have a problem sending the letter, it'll be the next, that'll just be the next step. Then they got to go through the state process to do whatever, and that's when, if, if they get through that process, then that's when it comes back to the town for public information and all that stuff, so.
Right.
So this is just one more step, you know.
Process.
I just want to, I just want to make it clear to the public that with this letter, we are not saying that we support it full right, forthright, until we get more information.
We're just saying.
But we're keeping the process going.
We'll support taking the next step.
Right.
This gentleman had a, had his hand up.
When they were before they specified a couple sites, specific sites of interest, does a letter of composition specific to concessions in council properties or supporting areas?
To their plan.
It would be to the proposal.
Marijuana Ovalay District.
Right.
Medical Marijuana Ovalay District, where it says where these facilities need to be.
Correct, correct.
So like Jack mentioned, CBA, there's no need to bring in.
I don't know, okay, I just.
But I mean, the town has already voted to accept medical marijuana in our town, and the town already voted to accept marijuana on a statewide level, Dayton overwhelmingly supported that.
Right.
So there's, there's support in our community for this. So, you know, I think we should be for it.
Okay.
You know, the people are for it, so we're here for the people.
Absolutely.
So to.
I mean.
To respond to this gentleman's question, then, really, the town has already designated location.
Yes.
This is the next step so that this company, group, whatever, can file papers with the state, but they still don't have approval, they don't, they've got to come back to the town with more info and, all right, I understand. Sir, could we have your name for the record, just so Karen has it?
Dan Higgins.
Please?
Dan Higgins?
Dan Higgins? Karen, you, Mr. Higgins?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Woody. That's a good point. It's already been voted as, you know, so.
Yeah, it's been voted.
And, and this, this would be a letter of non-opposition, not in general, for whatever plan that they have, where, specifically where they're gonna go, where they plan to have the dispensary, where they plan to have the cultivation site, which has kind of already been determined by the bylaw that was passed.
So I guess the question at hand is, do we, do we do a letter of non-opposition or a letter of support?
Uh, well, so I will obviously speak for myself. I'm in support of the project. I guess for the purpose of the letter, right now, I guess it really doesn't matter. Basically, what we're saying is, one second, what we're saying is, we're not gonna, if it's a non-opposition letter, we're not gonna be the thing that stands in the way.
At this point, at this point, right.
Yeah. So I guess it's up, you know, up to you guys. I support it.
This will be the only letter you're gonna send. You won't be required later, so that they can-
Yeah.
Yeah, we also, that's what we want to have happen. I just, because, yeah, as I said, additional hearings. Fascinating.
Yeah, I'm just writing something as a proposed motion.
I, I will say, though, I do think a letter of support would go a long way, not just for Green Harbor, but for any business that may be watching, that Dayton is open for business. We're ready.
I'm gonna make a motion that the board supports moving ahead with the proposal, and will prepare a letter to that extent. In other words, it's just gonna say that, that the board is supporting, moving forward with the project.
It needs to, it's either gonna need to say, we are in support of the project, or we are, we are, what'd you just say? What'd I just say?
Supports the proposal.
Or we're not, we're, we have no opposition to it. So I think that's the question at hand. What's the letter gonna say? We're supportive or we're non-opposition?
I think the board should support it. And the reason I think the board should support it is because, you know, I really think that this is a chance for us to send a message that we are ready to have commercial industry come into Dayton and help us balance the tax, the tax system, the tax structure. Now is the time.
What was the vote? I'm gonna withdraw that motion, 'cause I'm working on another one. The, the vote of the planning board, was they approved, so they supported?
They supported, yeah.
Okay.
So I think, so I think, in light of, Woody, you brought up the point that the town has already voted to support the medical marijuana zoning.
Yes.
And the fact that the planning board has voted to support it, then I'm comfortable writing a letter of support for it, rather than just non-opposition. So I think the motion can be very simple.
All right, so I move that the board of selectmen prepare a letter in support of the medical marijuana proposal.
I second that.
All in favor?
Karen, you have?
Yep. Well said.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
I, well, you could ask for discussion before the vote.
Okay.
Just in case somebody wants to say something. Of course, of course.
Is there further discussion?
I'd just like to say, I think it's a win for the town. I'm for it. And being a veteran, you, you better than having friends that have been involved with PTSD, for example. I don't mention names, but it seems to help them.
Actually, we do have a couple of letters of support here from people that have had some experience with the medical marijuana. So, and I think it's, I think the literature and everything really supports it as a new medical thing, so.
I, I would, I would like to say one thing before we take a vote, Mr. Chairman. For the people who maybe don't support it, your concerns will still be heard absolutely every step of the way. Just because the board may or may not vote to support it, doesn't mean that that means your voice doesn't matter or won't be heard throughout the process. It will be. We promise you that.
This only gives the Green Harbor the opportunity to move forward with the state. That's all it does. So it's not a done deal, and there'll certainly be more discussion about it.
It gives us the edge, Jack, because if we tell them no, they're gonna go somewhere else, and somebody else is gonna profit.
We won't, we won't say no at this point, no. I agree, we-
And I would also-
We've, we've left that they came to us.
Hundred percent.
Absolutely.
I would also encourage the public, or anyone who is not sure about this, or has questions, or may be in opposition to it right now, that you get your questions, feedback, your opinion to the board, so that we know what the feeling is out there. And if there are questions, certainly we wanna be able to have a, an open door that we can give you information, or if they have to come in, or whatever.
Yeah, we wanna be very clear. This, this is not recreational marijuana. This is medical marijuana, and they have two totally different processes. And the recreational marijuana is a long ways off still, but medical marijuana is, it's already, it's already in a lot of places, so that, just wanna make that clear. So don't worry about the recreational side of this at this point, so. Any further discussion? Okay. Take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Open for business.
Thank you.
Thank you, planning. Thank you, Vicki.
And I just, I just wanted to commend, commend the board, commend the planning board, commend Vicki and the Development Industrial Commission board. It's clear, everybody is on the same page, and I think it's good for the town.
Okay, the next item on-
Thank you, the board of selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Figueroa.
They're backing us up.
Yes. Okay, the next, the next unrolled business we have is to discuss the town administrator selection process and the status of that. Let me just go through the process that has occurred here. Back, I guess it must have been in February, an advertisement went out, and we got a number of applicants, a very large number of applicants. However, I don't, we had, I think we had 52. Out of that 52, as we did down, there was only 15 that actually met the criteria. And out of that, the, the town administrator screening committee gave us eight names. Then what happened was, two of our very top candidates have found other, other positions. And, and so my concern at this point is that you, you can't accept an application in March and get to mid-May, two and a half months later, and then try to talk to people about a job. Because as everybody knows, the people that are, the top-notch people are finding jobs someplace else. So I think, and I think this is such an important position we're trying to hire to, that we need to reab, in my, in my opinion, we need to, we need to re-advertise and start the process over, with a commitment that we will advertise, we will have a very relatively short period for people to apply for it, and then we will have a very short period to make a selection. You know, we'll still go through all the, the right process and make sure we do the proper screening and stuff, but I will, I will, I will commit us to a shorter, much shorter process of 30 to, 30 to 45 days maximum to get this wrapped up.
Would it still go through, like, a committee, like the town administrator committee?
We need to talk about that. I think, you know, I appreciate the work of the committee, which Vicki was on it, and, but I, but that, you know, and that's good, but it slows the process tremendously. And the committee, the committee did a tremendous job once we gave them the applicant. But, and I think it got back to us in two weeks?
Yes.
Two weeks. But the problem was, the app, we didn't get them, they didn't get the applicants until two weeks before we started really getting this process, so.
It took a long time for us to releasing them this time. Procedure before time is different.
Well, and also, we, I, if this is what the board wants to do, I do think the board should look into possibly not having the posting be a month long.
No.
Because I think by the time the posting ends, it's already been 30 days. Those people are already getting feedback from other people that they've applied to.
I absolutely agree. We need, I'm thinking, again, I'm, I think in two weeks.
So can I ask, are you gonna advertise with the MMA again, right at the Beacon?
Yeah.
We got, we got good candidates from that, the third, the third time.
You gonna advertise anywhere else?
I don't know, that's what we need to look at. I think, I think we need to-
We're gonna go to the Beacon.
I know. Yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to look at the sites that might produce a candidate, so. And I don't think we should limit it to the Beacon.
Right.
The other thing-
And my other main concern is experience. I would hope that we would hire our first administrator with some experience, someone who has been a TA somewhere else, and someone with strong government background and curation, those kinds of stuff.
Hit the, you're saying hit the ground.
We're gonna be paying this individual a lot of money, so we don't wanna hire somebody that we have to train. Why not somebody who comes through the door and go to work?
I think, as I said, I know you brought up, but I don't necessarily disagree with it, but I think you gotta look at the total candidate and what they bring to the table.
Right.
And while I, I think experience is important, there's other things that are also very important. So we'll, we'll, it'll all be done in an open meeting, because if we don't have a committee, we have to do it in an open meeting.
I would also.
Which we did anyway.
Yeah, and I think the other thing is that I think I would like to bring in other people to be in that interview process. I think we'd like to get a, another town administrator, because, you know, to bring in, to have them help us. They wouldn't, they wouldn't be a voting member, but they would at least have a little more insight into what you need in the town administrator.
The first time around, they passed on Mr. Brown, who's the administrator of the town of Somerset. He's doing a fantastic job. Dyson had the opportunity to hire him.
Right.
And that got messed up. Somerset jumped right on.
We can't, we can't-
But he would be a good guy. I, I-
Maybe we'll contact him, okay.
He's a great guy.
Okay.
He calls, Mr. Brown, he's doing a great job.
There's a lot of good ones around, so.
Yeah.
So that, that would be my proposal. So I guess we need a motion if-
Um, but-
I'm sorry, Tom.
Is it slow?
Yeah, absolutely.
There was no, no results of the candidates that were grabbed. The other candidates that were submitted, none grabbed, jumped out.
Yes, there were, and that's what I wanna address. This is the first time I'm here, and we lost two. No, we lost one. We had four good candidates that we interviewed and we talked about, all right? One of them actually was not free to accept a position in this community. The other three are experienced town administrators. Personally, I felt that we would bring those three in and pick from that. I really have a problem going out to advertise again. It just goes on and on and on. We've appropriated money for an entire year. We're not doing anything with it.
Well, I just want, let me just respond to that. I, I don't disagree with you at all, Nancy, but I think that the process that has been used has not been a very efficient process. And I think we're, we're, we're cutting ourselves short, because we've, we have lost, we absolutely lost the best candidate, in my opinion, that we could ever have had here, because we didn't get it done fast enough.
I would agree with that, but I still think there are still people within the three that exist that, I think what we're gonna do again is, we're not gonna go back, we're not gonna contact them, they're not gonna apply again. And I think that we may have someone of the three that exists. And I agree with you, number one, he was my personal number one, too. He's not coming here. But I don't think just because we can't get our number one, doesn't mean that two, three, and four would not also shine in the town of Dayton.
I think there's another issue, and, you know, the, the salary, you know, we're very limited in what the salary posted. And we, we found, we, when we look at it, that the salary that we are, we put in the posting is not gonna be adequate to hire a decent administrator.
But I feel like we, we got people who are really qualified for nine. My point is, why are we gonna-
They know what the money was.
Why would we reject?
They're fine.
Correct. Why would we reject three qualified people that wanna work here for $92,000 a year to go back out to get someone for 40, 30, $20,000 more? I mean-
Because you might get, you might get more, you might get, number one, you might get more candidates, you might get more qualified candidates.
But then, because this is the fourth time, my, Mr. Chairman, my concern is, we're gonna start not getting people to apply, just because it looks like we don't have, we're not doing something right. Correct, yeah. Do we really want it? It just kinda looks like, just like with business, it's starting, people starting to feel like maybe we don't want it. And I don't wanna send that message. I know we do want it.
We do want it. I just don't wanna compromise and make sure we, I wanna make sure we get absolutely the best candidates in front of us, so that we can-
For the money that we're paying, we aren't gonna get the tippity-top-notch, long-term, experienced town administrators. But by the same token, I think we all want somebody that has been a town administrator. The person coming through that door has gotta start from scratch in this town.
There's no one to train them either. You know this.
So, they've, they've gotta come through the door knowing what a town administrator does. And we've got three candidates, and quite frankly, my own personal opinion is, if I could flip three coins or a three-headed coin, I mean, I, I just feel to delay this further, further, for the whole year that money got appropriated, and it's like, people in town must be saying-
Let me be clear, we really only have two candidates, because another candidate that we were looking at has made a deal where he currently is, so he's not really, so we have two candidates.
And I'd be happy with, with the other two. That's just my personal opinion.
You looked at one day.
I just wanna- Well, make sure we get the best one.
Can I, I, I'm not faulting you. But I, and I, I assert on that.
I know.
Which is not resolved. Now, I've been to, I didn't do the original round. We've been through a number of selecting through this whole process. That's how long this has been going.
I know, believe me.
Exactly.
Believe me. Now, also, I feel personally, any one of those candidates, you do a good job.
Well, that was the recommendation we got. That was the recommendation we got.
That's why we put it in your hands. I'm not trying to fault anybody. But what I'm saying is, as far as my personal opinion, and being honest, I was a clerk, and I was learning, learning about that, which is a learned process for me. But also, I say any one of those people were qualified. And I'll go back to, without mentioning names, I'll go back to the other round, the top candidate, which is in the past, is going. I would have put you on it, too. I mean, that's not me.
We were involved, yeah. I was involved.
But I mean, I don't, I'm not faulting anybody. I understand what you're thinking is, Jack, you know, coming in, you want the best. But I mean, I just, my, I can't see dragging this out.
The grass, my thing is, the grass, we're taking a bet. The grass may not be greener on the other side, for the fourth time.
I'll tell you something else, and I, nothing, I'm gonna cut you off, but I have someone that was involved in a process in Somerset. He's now, you probably know him, I mean, he was involved in picking the one in Somerset. Yes, sometimes the pickings are slim up there, but there are still good people out there.
And you, and I feel like you found-
And I thought-
Eight good, you gave us eight good people.
That's my opinion.
And I feel like I had my preferences. I'm sure my colleagues had them. Maybe we didn't get our first choice, but I still feel like, out of the seven that, you know, were still viable, I feel like there's one in there who could be our first town administrator and do a good job.
That's why we're discussing. Again, I, I only, I only can-
I got that for you.
Yeah. Vicki?
What I was gonna ask is, how long is the contract? Like I said, I would support any one of those candidates, we put forward. I'm not sure why the guy chose another town.
It was already, it was already in, they had taken it off, so.
He had come down, because they've been to town a lot.
Well, because he was, he was torn with the decision. If we'd contacted him a week earlier, we'd have, a week earlier.
But how long is the contract?
This was all-
We haven't decided. We haven't decided.
Is it gonna be somewhat limited, and we'll go out for another one, and re-negotiate the contract after a period of time?
Well, we need to talk about that. I mean, if you give someone, you gotta-
You're not gonna get stuck with somebody that's bad, but you might get stuck with somebody that's excellent. You gotta think positive.
It's hard to attract somebody to one-
The first one's gonna have a rough road, because you have road one. So you have to give somebody a chance.
We're discussing. I'm not, it's not my decision. It's our decision.
Oh, that's telling you.
Right, right, exactly, right.
I'm just gonna, my personal opinion is, I think we should have the three people who still remain, or two, excuse me, two, correct, you're correct. Have them come in, have an interview on camera, and see, see if these people are worthy of being our town administrator.
I support that, because when we were discussing how we were gonna do this, what I said was, let's make believe this is a school committee, and we're hiring a superintendent. So you interview all these, you know, you pare it down, you interview people. When you get it down to the last three, you announce the names publicly, and you bring them in, so people get to see who the candidates are. And, and so I agree with Brett, that if it's two that's left, I, I think we need to do it in an open meeting, and just say, it's two men, Mr. So-and-so and Mr. So-and-so, these are our candidates. And would each of you gentlemen just say a little bit about your background and your experience? And, you know?
So let, I'll entertain a motion in, on what you wanna do.
I, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, or I make a motion, rather, to have the two remaining candidates come in to a selectmen's meeting and speak about their background and their experience, and why they wanna be the first administrator in the town of Dayton.
Second. Second.
Any further discussion? The only, the only further discussion I'd like to have, I, um, do we need to add in that? I think we should bring in another town administrator and maybe another person from Dayton that, you know, just so we have a panel more than just the three of us in, in that committee. Because it's a very, it's such an important thing. I want to make sure we get.
A hundred percent, I agree with you.
Someone that we, we would be successful with.
I don't have a problem with that.
Not at all.
So do we need, you guys say we need to amend that?
I'll amend that. Mr. Chairman, I amend my motion. I, I say that, I make a motion that we call in the remaining two finalists for the town administrator position, to speak to us about their background and experience, but that we also include a town administrator and perhaps another expert slash Dayton resident to serve on the panel.
I'll, I'll second that. As a matter of fact.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um.
And then if everybody doesn't like them, in town, then we go out.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Nice to see you, Mr. Brown.
Nice to see you, folks. I love, like. You're going to watch the Celtics, eight thirty. Sorry.
Ooh, jeez, we've got five minutes to get this done. Okay, new business. We have, I got a lot of this stuff over here, you know, it's, we have an applica, we, uh, the Arugios from Arugios Farm have purchased some land. It's the former Sanson property. And they, they have, they're filing an application for an agricultural preservation restriction program. And so what they need from us is just a, a signature from the, from me, I guess, just saying that the town, uh.
Supports it.
Supports it. I'd just like to point a couple of things out. I, I guess, it takes a little bit of time to do this, but there's a number of things on here that, that have to be answered. And one was, do we have an established agricultural commission, which we don't? Have we enacted a municipal right to farm, which we don't? And have we implemented a tracking system, prevent issue, issues of local permits or unauthorized construction on protected farmland, and we don't? Have we done fed and inventoried, mapped farmland to be protected, either as a part of the approved master plan or separate, which we don't? We do have, the next one is, do we have a CPA, which we do? And then has exercised and assigned rights to a nonprofit preservation organization to protect farmland, and we don't. And work collaborative with regional efforts to include agricultural land use plan, which we don't. And I bring those up only because apparently this process, they get points from the town that has those things. So, we, we have that in our plan someplace, but those are the kind of things, I think, as a, as a community, we need to move forward. So that this is protecting open space, and also giving, people like the Arugios have takes, it takes such an interest in our community, a better opportunity to get this kind of thing. Not just them specifically, but anybody who wants to protect agricultural land, so.
Is, is this the same kind of arrangement that the town of Dayton entered into with Reed Brothers? And the other partner in this was the city of Totten?
I suspect so, because.
Because I'm, I'm thinking, it's not like we're totally agreeing to this. If it's the same kind of thing, that's still in place. That land could.
I don't think it's exactly the same as that property up at Divine Farms, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, that, it won't be developed into housing or any of that. It remains farmland.
I don't think that's the exact deal.
Well, this, this, this gives up the, the, um, the rights to.
Development.
The development rights to the.
Right.
See, there's another, there's another question here, which we can't answer, yes, because they don't want it. But will we contribute to the cost of restriction and amount of contribution determined in consultation? We're not going to check that yes, because they don't need us to do that. But it, it also says in here, if you check that yes, that, that is more supportive of, of the town for this type of thing. So, I think that, and that would be something to probably come to CPC. So I think, I just mentioned all those things, because I think as a community, and as a board, we ought to, we ought to start looking at those things, to see if we can get them in place.
That's part of that list of best practices we will.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, right. And we're going to talk about that.
All the properties along that Divine Farm, open space plan over there, their property values increased because of that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
There's a house for sale there right now. I looked it up, they're getting big money for that house.
Right.
And, and in the case of that, that agreement, I'll call it, both the city of Totten and the town of Dayton did put money into it, so that, that, that would happen.
The property was sale, too.
And they're not asking, they're not asking for the financial contribution in this.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to, uh.
I'll make a motion to support the, uh, the application of, uh, Arugio Farms for the agricultural preservation restriction.
I will second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
How many acres are there, Jack? Does, how many acres is that? Is it the whole?
Twenty, it's nineteen acres.
Is it all of the land down on Elm Street?
Sanson, the Sanson, former Sanson.
It's got to be.
Yes, nineteen acres. And, you know, he's, uh.
Runs parallel to the town's, the, the church cemetery, right?
Yeah.
Big open land?
They've leased this land for twenty years, and they've, have always farmed it.
Right.
Just now they, they have an opportunity.
It bucks the council up.
Exactly.
Yes.
So it's a, it's a good piece of land to be protected.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
And I really commend the.
Your property.
Commend the Arugios for, for doing this kind of thing for our town.
And they may increase some of the home values in there, which is what I'm trying to do.
People want, yeah.
Don't tell everyone all our secrets.
Any further discussion, or, if not, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Um, we have an appointment to the open space committee.
Yay. Ooh, oh, this is exciting.
Yeah, this is exciting. Uh, we have a volunteer form here for, from Ellen Bidlak to become a member of the open space committee. And those of you who know Ellen, she's very capable, and she knows a lot about the open space and.
She worked on the CPC.
She worked on the CPC.
Way back.
She was on the open space committee before, so she's a wonderful addition to this. And, uh, and we're going to talk more about open space here in a few minutes also. So I would entertain a motion to, uh, appoint Ellen to the open space committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. Glad to have you back.
Yes, thank you, Ellen. Appreciate you.
We're not going to let you escape this time.
We may have some other committees we'll.
Oh, don't say that, she'll, she'll not want to do it. We have an open.
Ellen's probably better, right? She goes to bed early. She gets up very early in the morning.
We have a road opening permit. Okay, this is a.
More of the Celtics.
They, they better win.
Thanks, Woody. Hey, Woody, um, let's talk here.
I'll talk to you later.
X P D X.
I need to go watch the Celtics.
Yeah, that's fine.
Priorities.
We have a request from the Dayton Water District, the Water District, in accordance with Chapter 359 of the Acts of 1950, is hereby notifying the Board of Selectmen, it's intent to enter upon a town road lake located at 376 Center Street, for the purpose of this evacuation, to install a new water service at this location. So there.
Make the motion to grant the request.
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask one question. As everybody knows, we are working on redoing the website. Uh, one thing, I, I think Selectman Goulart and I have discussed it before you came to the board, Mr. Chairman. But I think one good idea would be, for example, with these road opening permits, um, sometimes there are detours and things like that. If we could have that information, um, with the length of time that the detour will be there, to put it on the website, kind of let folks know.
Absolutely.
Put it on our social media. You know, there's going to be a detour on such and such street for, from, you know, X, Y, and Z dates.
Or even a construction period, like they do with the state highways from nine AM, like we did for the bridge, from nine AM to two PM, the bridge will be closed, Center Street will be closed. So they get the traffic over and back, but during the day.
So we should probably contact the Water District, and, actually, both Water Districts and Tom Ferry.
Yep. Center Street's a busy street because of the schools and the bridge, so if we know when the road's going to be, have construction on it.
Okay.
We still got to vote. Didn't we vote?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, I guess we have two things. One, um, there's an application that we've been asked to give permission to move for, oh, we already did that. I'm sorry, we did that last. Duh. Okay, the other thing we, we did today, we had a meeting with Serpent, which is the, somebody tell me what that's.
Southeastern Regional Planning and Development Strategy. Economic and Development.
We, we follow them around.
Right. And so, I'm becoming familiar with this, but it's, it's a great opportunity for us to, to do things. And what we talked about today was entering into a community compact with the state, in order to get some assistance from them for, to develop some best practices around a, a number of different things. And so, that discussion today, centered on, uh, we talked about three things. One was the, um, where am I?
Stormwater.
Stormwater, to get them to, uh, once you talk a little bit more, you know what the requirement is.
We're working on the, you've heard us, you heard me mention this before, we're working on, uh, preparing the application to get our stormwater permit renewed. One of the requirements in that permit is that we show evidence of our plan to, um, educate at least the four different groups of people. This is a requirement of the EPA, who currently still has priority with that. So, um, in working with Tom Ferry and with board members, and Jack's new to this, but, um, that permit has to be ready and filed by September. So that's a project we have a deadline on. And Serpent is willing to help us develop educational materials, and to help us get that, what we need to add that pot to the permit application. So, that's why this is the, this one's our first priority, because of the September deadline. So, we're, we're moving ahead with that.
So we're going to identify that as our first priority for this, uh, this process. The second thing we, the second priority that we identified was, uh, complete an open space recreational plan. And again, the, the open space committee will certainly be, be involved in this, in, in what this will allow us to do. Once, we have, the master plan identifies, oh, the need for open space. But we need to have a more detailed open space plan. And when you, when you get that done, that opens up a lot of opportunities for other funding sources from a number of different places. So, I think this is really critical. And the intent would be to, to get an application in for this one as well, as to what Nancy just talked about. And then have them come to the open space committee and kind of work with them to, to get this done. Um, the third one that we had initially talked about was the, uh, to protect vulnerable populations, to decrease risk to people who are more susceptible to climate change. And that would include, uh, down on, in South Dayton, uh, which is very vulnerable to flooding and that kind of thing. However, since we met this morning, I reviewed this grant request that we already.
Oh, Concom?
Yeah, for Concom, and it, and addresses exactly the same thing.
Oh, okay.
So we don't, I don't think we need to use one of them.
So they're taking care of that.
They'll, they'll take care of that.
Okay.
And so, we need to pick a third one. Um, I looked through these again, and I don't know how, but I think, in light of what we just talked about with the Arugio situation, there is a, a best practice under local agricultural and silver culture, establish an agricultural commission to advocate for local farms administer a right to farm bylaw, and otherwise represent agricultural interests. And I think that might be a, a one that we want to entertain.
Yeah, and, and under agriculture, we may, if we read all these, we may come up with a whole best practice that's a conglomerate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And address a number of those issues.
Absolutely. The, i- i- if I may, um, for, for those who know, Selectman Goulart and I, uh, are, are working on a right to farm. We have been working on it for quite a while. Uh, we had a couple other issues to deal with pertaining to farms for a little while. Um, the reason why I personally would support, uh, this third best practice to satisfy the community compact cabinet, is because instead of having the Board of Selectmen sort of study and work on right to farm, we would be forming an agricultural commission, presumably, which would have, uh, some farmers on it, residents of Dayton, people involved in agriculture and agricultural business, uh, working on it. And so instead of coming from the Board of Selectmen, now I'm not making, you know, not giving us, I do credit, we're, we're intelligent people. Um, but I think to have a right to farm bylaw come from actual experts, I think it goes a long way in terms of, um, having the public be assured that, uh, they're doing it correctly, and, and with all the appropriate considerations and due diligence.
The other thing is, in the Weed Whacker bill, there is a specific, this is when you and I started working on it, there was a specific clause in that, that legislation that directly talks about getting an agricultural commission organized and appointed. So, this ties in well with, with a provision of that also.
And we'd be getting money for it.
I just want to make a comment, too. We say right to farm. Right to farm doesn't mean anybody can do anything in Dayton to, to farm. It means that there'll be a, a right to farm bylaw that will address farming, but also ensure that the, that the residents of Dayton are, are heard, so they're not subjected to things that would not be appropriate in certain areas of town, for example. Or, or put some restrictions on what people can do with wildlife, with, uh, you know.
Livestock.
Yeah, yeah. Wildlife, livestock. So anyways, so I don't want people to think it just means we're going to have, everybody can do whatever they want with farming, so.
And, and to, to that point, you would have public hearing, the agricultural commission, where they would hear those residents' concerns, and presumably incorporate those concerns into a final model draft bylaw.
But I know, but I do know, I was on the open space committee before, and people like the rural, like the agricultural nature of Dayton. So I think that, this will help us, even go along with the open space stuff, so that we are protecting that, that rural nature of Dayton, that we all value so much.
So, so just to clarify, the ten thousand dollars the town has already gotten, as part of Serpent's helping us with the three best practices that we're going to work on, Serpent will take those, we will put them in our application. And if we can get this done relatively soon, and get that application in, Serpent expects this community, town of Dayton, could be designated a community compact cabinet member as early as July. And when, once this happens, and we, the town gets that designation, it opens up a lot of opportunity for grants in other areas, which will also help Concom, I'm sure. So, that's why it's so important. We got the first round of money, we got professional help, and now we can continue on.
So we're trying, we're trying to get these things done for Dayton without costing the taxpayers any more money.
Right, right.
One reason, I just wanted to mention, one, one of the merits that I really like about this, and I'm so glad Selectman Goulart has really spearheaded this, is because a big component of, regardless of whichever three best practices we choose, education is a big component of all three. And I really think that goes a long way, in terms of having whatever these best practices are, be sustainable going, uh, well into the future. And I really, you, you really did a good job on this.
And, in the case of two of these, we will have other committees involved, and more, hopefully more townspeople, uh, with the open space and with the agricultural commission. So we can get people who know, either serve right now on open space, but have an interest, but also people with the agricultural knowledge that can help us put this together.
Okay, so I entertain a motion, we should, uh, let's identify the three areas, so.
I'll make that motion that we, we notify Serpent that our three best practices will be the, the stormwater topic that we covered, the open space, uh, topic, and the agricultural commission. And, and those are broad enough that we can, you know.
Does that, we can, we can better define those.
Right, exactly.
And we could narrow, or we could be more inclusive, it's up top.
The one that's, the one that's really the structure one is stormwater, because it's the federal government telling us, you've got to do this, this, and this. But these others, we have good opportunity for residents' input.
Absolutely. And I, and I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? If none, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, that's great.
Good news, very good news. Yeah, good news, very good news.
We had a lot of meetings today, but I think we had a lot of confidence.
I tell you, we've been meeting since eight thirty this morning, so I got to tell you, it's been a long day. But, uh, but it's all been very productive. Um, so briefly, let's talk about the Capitol Flyer returns to Memorial Day.
Cape Flyer.
Cape Flyer. See, it's a little long.
Just, uh, just a summary, folks, if you want to grab a pencil, um, this information is also available, uh, on the town website. This is the train that will be going to Hyannis from cell station on, uh, Monday, excuse me, Sunday, May the twenty-eighth, which is the Sunday right before Memorial Day. The closest station for us is Middleborough Lakeville. The train will be there at eight, will depart there at eight fifty-two in the morning. Um, and if you're interested in getting more information, you can go to the website, uh, www dot capeflyer, C-A-P-E-F-L-Y-E-R dot even, no, eventbrite, E-V-E-N-T-B-R-I-T-E dot com. Um, it's free, but you do have to register and they will send tickets to you. And so this little flyer is posted right out in the foyer near the, the veterans' office. Uh, but if you call and you have any questions, uh, this will, this will recognize the troops. Uh, they work with Cape Cod Kids for the troops, there will be a twenty-four hour honor guard. And, um, all you have to be is a veteran and you can bring your guest with you.
What do you mean, all you have to be is a veteran?
Yeah.
I'm only kidding.
Well-
You have to be a veteran.
You don't have to, you don't have to, um, you don't have to be in active service or you don't have to have been in a certain law. I get a bunch of veterans in my family.
It's been a long day, we gotta, we gotta make a little-
The only qualification is that you are a veteran. That's, that's what I meant by that remark. And it's free, so that'll be out on the bulletin board.
Okay, um, do we have correspondence?
Oh, we have more announcement, you know.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I'm just, I'm going to read half. Trash bags, sharps, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Please call five zero eight six six nine six four three one for more information. There are vacancies on the historical commission, land use committee, green communities grant committee, and the cemetery commission. Also, the community preservation committee has an opening for a historical commission representative and a possible opening for an at-large member. Friends of the Dayton Animal Shelter will be holding a garage sale on Saturday, May twentieth, from nine AM to three PM behind Town Hall. To reserve a space, call seven seven four two two eight eight nine four zero or five zero eight four zero zero six 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 seven. Proceeds will benefit the Dayton Animal Shelter. The Dayton Historical Society Home Plate fundraiser will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-third, twenty seventeen, from eleven AM until closing. The restaurant will donate twenty percent of your purchase to the Dayton Historical Society. Tickets are required in order to help the society. Tickets are available on the Dayton Historical Society Facebook page. You may print the tickets or just present the Facebook post on your phone at the time of purchase.
Just so you know, the, the Home Plate Restaurant is up off, uh, is on Bay Street.
Bay Street, down Bay Street.
Bay Street up in Taunton, so, and I hear the food's very good there.
It is. Used to be the Gondola.
Nice view, too. It's like right near the water, right across the street.
Yeah.
Very nice. Bulky items curbside pickup is scheduled for the week of May twenty-second through May twenty-ninth. Tags for items are available for sale in the Selectmen's office. We did also post the flyer on our Facebook page and the town website. This will follow the regular trash schedule. So I'm going to conclude that and just read this one last announcement. Dayton Lions Cow Chip Schedule, so this is for the Cow Chip Festival. Friday, June second, five PM, rides and vendors. Also, a woodsman show. Saturday, June third, twelve PM, rides and vendors. Two PM, cow chip contest, that's where the excitement is, folks. Five PM, chicken barbecue. Seven PM, live band. Ten PM, fireworks. Sunday, June fourth, twelve PM, tractor pull. Twelve PM, rides and vendors, of course, and five PM will be the closing. All proceeds will benefit the mass lions eye research and local lions charities. And I will be a hundred percent certain to post this flyer here, uh, on Facebook and on the town website for folks, okay?
I want to mention a couple other things. I probably shouldn't, but I'm going anyways. Uh, number one, I'll be the, as the newest Selectman, I, you know, been nominated or to be the judge of the cow chip contest. Secondly, it'll be a dunk tank.
You don't get out of that by being chairman?
I, the dunk tank?
Yeah, and the ch- cow chip festival.
No, so I, I volunteered myself to be in the dunk tank. So if you want to come down and dunk me, and Brett has also agreed, he's going to be on it also.
Sort of not agree.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not doing it. No, no.
I think you all know about the cow chip, it's been going for many, many years and it's a lot of fun and it's a huge fundraiser for the Lions, so. You want me to go or you want to?
Whoever would like to finish.
You want to do some more?
Um, the Dayton Historical Society will be holding a plant sale on May twenty-seventh from nine AM to two PM at the Dayton, at historical Winslow Davis Museum located at twelve seventeen William Street. Maps and historical memorabilia will also be available for sale. If anyone wishes to donate plants, please drop them off on Friday, May twenty-sixth or early on May twenty-seventh. Please label them and leave them by the bulkhead. Dayton Fire Association will be hosting a touch a truck event on Saturday, June third, eight AM to two PM on the grounds of Mannheim, New England. Free admission to the event. Children can get up close, look and climb aboard many of the supersized vehicles. Dayton Fire Association will also be collecting donations for the Shriners Hospitals for Children. Mannheim will also be hosting a blood drive on Saturday, June third, free pancake breakfast with a blood donation. The annual town meeting will be held at the Dayton Middle School on June fifth, two thousand seventeen, at seven PM. A special town meeting will be held prior to the annual town meeting at six PM. The Board of Selectmen will begin their summer meeting schedule on June seventh. The final weekly meeting will be on May thirty-first. There will be no meeting on June seventh. And every other week during the summer, normal meeting schedule will resume on September the sixth.
The other thing I want to mention about the, uh, the town meeting, we will approve the warrant for the town meeting on Monday. And do we read the warrant at that meeting?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
We, we, we have.
Well, we usually, we should read it at the Wednesday, we can read it at that meeting, but we should read it Wednesday, too, for informational purposes.
Okay.
I remember reading it once at least.
Yeah, we, maybe, yeah.
It's long.
Okay, I know it's long. Okay, so we'll, we'll be reading that warrant, uh, on Wednesday, a week from today. Also, I think everybody knows, or if you haven't, we, they'll be, uh, the warrant will be mailed to everybody's home. So you get a chance to look at it before it, uh, before the meeting. And, uh, we hope we can get some good attendance at the meeting because it's your town.
And my hat goes off to you for the signs. I have seen them around town, uh, which denote the special, uh, town meeting and the annual town meeting time and location. Kudos. Good idea.
Okay. Any reports?
Uh, just a quick one. This morning at nine o'clock, I met with Tom Ferry, uh, and three engineers, uh, from, uh, that have been hired or worked directly for AstraZeneca about the Main Street drainage project that's going to take place. Uh, the board reviewed the, uh, draft agreement. Um, there were a couple of minor corrections. That was emailed back to me this afternoon. I looked at it again and I copied you. I emailed the agreement as it came back to David Gay so he can look at it. And once David, um, gives his final blessing, we can vote to approve that. This is the agreement that gives the town of Dayton a permanent easement on property that belongs to AstraZeneca. Uh, that will allow Tom to install a drainage pipe. And it also contains the terms and conditions under which AstraZeneca will fund up to, I believe the amount was sixty thousand dollars for pipes and material for that project. Um, and all the safeguards are in there in case by any chance, anyone working there, uh, if the highway department workers happen to hit anything that appears to be hazardous, they will immediately stop and AstraZeneca will be, bring in a special crew that if it is hazardous, they will do the work through that area and then our people will finish. But our, our employees will be protected during that whole process. And then the other meeting is this afternoon or this evening at five thirty. Uh, Mr. Ferry conducted a public hearing as required by, I think it was chapter eighty-seven of the general laws. The purpose of that meeting was to give residents an opportunity to come in, and he had his computer here, to see the area in the town forest, uh, on Chestnut Street that is going to be cleared of dead trees. Uh, there are approximately three acres of, uh, I think it's red pine that has died from disease over the years and they actually now are a, uh, public hazard because they're tall enough, if they fall, they can actually go across the road, the ones that are out near the road. And, um, they are a hazard to anybody that's up there walking around the town forest. So, uh, there was only one resident from that area that came in tonight and specifically wanted to see where it was. Mr. Ferry stated that the land will not be clear cut. There are other trees growing amongst the dead trees that will be taken down. It may also be a very good place for the group of individuals that are planting the American chestnut trees in town to, uh, plant some of the trees in that area. So, uh, there was no opposition, only one resident. Uh, the meeting ended, I think it lasted maybe twenty, twenty-five minutes. And the next step is now Mr. Ferry can put this out because of the size of the trees, this will have to be contracted work. It's not something that we have the equipment to handle it. So that's where we are with the trees.
How appropriate that, because chestnut trees on Chestnut Street.
That's right.
I just want to report on another thing. Uh, we've all been involved in it, but we had a meeting, a joint meeting tonight. It's the second one we've had, uh, the Selectmen, the zoning board, and the planning board, and, and, uh, a building inspector. And it's an example of what we're trying to do more of, and that is connect these committees, um, so that we're all on the same page as we move forward. We've had a couple other meetings that have been held that way. Uh, we recently had a meeting, a couple of meetings with the, the soil board, the, the health, the, uh, the board of health, and-
Planning.
And the planning.
And the building commission.
In conserva, in conservation.
Right.
To deal with an issue in town. But what we're trying to, to do is get these committees so that we're all talking. We may not all have the authority over some of the issues, but at least we're aware of the issues so that we can all make sure we're moving in the same direction. And we can all be of assistance to each other. So I think we've been very successful in the last, in the last while, so I think we need to, we'll continue that. So just want you to kind of know how we're, how we're proceeding, which I think is great. Approval of minutes or acknowledgements? Do we have any acknowledgements?
No acknowledgements.
Approval of minutes?
No minutes.
May I make one acknowledgement, just given, given the timing? I did just want to acknowledge, uh, uh, Planning Board Office Manager, she wears many hats, Heidi Swiss. Uh, congratulations on your upcoming nuptials, and aside from that, you do a fantastic job. Uh, you're invaluable on the planning board. Uh, we, uh, personally, I have benefited greatly from your expertise this first year that I was a Selectman. And, uh, I really appreciate you and I appreciate all that you do for the town. Thank you.
You're very knowledgeable about all that planning stuff. I'm very, very impressed, so. Okay, approval of once.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant forty-six A dash seventeen in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, four hundred sixty dollars and forty-nine cents payroll. Warrant forty-six B dash seventeen in the amount of forty thousand, five hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty cents. And warrant forty-six C dash seventeen in the amount of eleven thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars and eighty cents. Accounts payable dated, um, May seventeenth be approved.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we went a little longer than we normally do, but I think we had to get a lot, we had a lot of information tonight and I appreciate, uh, you tuning in and participating with us, so. We'll entertain another, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Cable.
Good night, everybody. Have a good weekend.